Okay, good, next. Wes, you're up.
Excellent.
Wes, keep point for 78 Marion Street. Okay, good.
I didn't bring a stand. Is there a convenient spot to put this where everyone can see? Or do that?
Put the card down.
Sorry about that.
You know, if we wheel it over here, then the camera can see it as well.
Is there a way to put it where it won't roll?
Just here on the chair.
Okay, I'm here with Carolyn Dagres, who's the owner of this house. She's currently resident on Chestnut. She recently bought this place. And we are, it's on 78 Marion. The road is here.
We just looked at it a couple of weeks ago with some architectural changes.
Yep, so this existing condition plant, house sits here. You can see that when the house was built, it was, the woodland area was cut. It was almost right to the new build line. There were numerous pine trees planted around the perimeter. The house is a Royal Barry Wills house. Quite, it doesn't really look that large from the front, but it's quite, it's a pretty significant house. There's a wooden terrace right here, which is about four feet off of the existing grade. And you can see the contour lines here. There's a kind of awkward moment where the fill to create a lawn in the backyard just cascades down this very uniform slope into the woodlands. And their conservation woodland land around here and here. This is the house, the subject property. This is a proposed redevelopment. So this is the conservation trail system. This is from the conservation map. And here's the house, and here's that awkward slope. You can see that the, quite a bit of, actually, this is a winter photograph, so there's quite a bit of conifer cover here. And, and I'll get to this later, but I can do it now. We took pictures of these three vantage points on the conservation trail just to show that the views from the trail are fairly obscured. It's by the natural, you know, by the density and the layering of the existing wood. So, my point is, is that we feel like, or I feel like Kerry is with us 100% on this. This is a very unnatural field. It's also overgrown with invasive plant material. That whole slope goes into the woods, so there's this house, a very flat lawn, which some people love. A slope that's been invaded by lots of unwanted plant species. And then a very pristine and beautiful woodland that doesn't have too many native species, a few, but not too many, that undulates and flows and has a very beautiful natural feel. The big intent of this, of our approach here is to take that feeling that exists in woodland of that gorgeous native environment and bring it into the house. So we want to undo this natural fill, definitely remove the invasive species, and then revegetate things with native species that have the character and the feeling of that environment that we like so much. So that's, that's the big picture idea. When this was built with a square courtyard driveway, it was actually approved as a circle, a circular driveway. I don't know exactly why or how it ended up this way. The records, the plan on record that was approved by the planning department had a circular driveway.
When was that house built? Fifteen years ago, something like that?
Yeah.
Twenty?
I'm a little confused about the history.
Was it ten?
Yeah. But it changed owners numerous times and it wasn't an easy path. There's some old, there's some arborvitae here as well, which are feeling similar to this sort of phenomenon, this unnatural thing. They really stand out. You can even see that on the ground. It eaten up about six or seven feet by deer. What we're proposing, just want to sort of get some of the technical stuff. All the drainage, all the septic, all the utilities, all the sort of site infrastructure is not being altered. It's just staying exactly as it is.
You're increasing the paving though, is it?
We are increasing the paving, yes. It's a forest pavement. Actually, it's not forest pavement. It could be. However, what we did is, I talked, I worked with David. I sent him a, David Conway, I sent him a table, which I'm happy to share with you, that outlined the, all the changes from before and after. The table outlined lawn area change, woodland plant beds change, house area coverage stayed the same. Deck versus proposed terrace, and then driveway change. And he said, I can read his email, he said that there's actually a net increase that will come up to improvement of previous area because we're eliminating a lot of lawn and we're creating a lot of plant beds and woodland area. So that more than compensates for the change that we're proposing. I'm happy to share his email, and he has, he printed out a six or seven page engineering report.
Which you did.
Yes.
Could you email that to me?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll send a little cover note, cover note included with it that said we're approving this situation rather than unchanging it. So what we're proposing here is, is, this is our layout and materials plan. Is essentially keeping the driveway where it is. A few very minor changes in the geometry. This is shifting a couple of feet here, but that's staying the same. We're proposing a circular driveway with a very large American beech tree planted in the middle. We're proposing a slight increase in the lawn area here and a massive decrease in the lawn area over here. So the only, only little bits, a quarter here, a small section here and a quarter here. This is, this is actually, we're decreasing the lawn here. And this is, this was all lawn. It will become a labyrinth garden, which is a hedge. And it'll be planted with understory trees here. We are proposing, we're proposing a geometric planting here. This third garage here, rather than have the pavement right up to it, we're proposing that there will be tracks, paved tracks and a ground cover, ground cover bed just to minimize the expanse of asphalt up there. You've already seen the proposed portico renovation. In the back here, we're proposing the terrace with a series of landscape features, which are the sculptural wall things. We're working with a fellow named Lou French, who's quite a well-known mason sculptor. And the idea is, like I said earlier, deconstruct that level terrace. And just like the ground is naturally sloping into the woodland, each of these, these three landscape structures, one here, one here, and one here, that divide the space into one spot here, one here, one here, and one here. So that these four, these state landscape spaces that were created by this division of the stone sculpture structures. And each one of them will be at a slightly different level. So we'll step down the slope and, and in essence restore the natural lay of land. It won't be undulating, but it will be stepping down at the same sort of level that we think it was when we started. There'll be a terrace area here, natural stone landings coming out of the house here, here, here. Very large monolithic stone. The terrace level will be perched, not as, not nearly as high as the deck, but it will be kind of halfway. If the deck is about four feet higher than the existing grade, this terrace will be about two feet higher than the existing grade. So it's rising slightly. None of the grade changes here exceed three feet. We're very careful to keep them within that bound. And then, so there's a fire pit here. It's going to catch the southern sun. It's sunk in. There's stone at the back here, so it should be normally cozy. That's at the lower level. There's a fern and moss garden here that's also at the lower level. There's this sort of paved terrace here. There's a water feature in the stone structure here. There's a grove of trees after revegetation of that slope that I described of birch and azaleas and native crown covers. Up here, we're proposing dogwoods, azaleas, and other native, native understory shrubs and perennials. And then a garden, also a native garden right here with witch hazels and perennials. I don't think the labyrinth is going to be part of Phase One of construction. But the idea here would be to have a hedge that's about anywhere from three to five feet tall. Couple sitting areas, an entrance here and an entrance here. And some sort of pavement or even a mowing pattern or gravel pathway that has labyrinth quality for meditating, walking, doing whatever you want to. Light plan. There's an existing post lantern here. We're proposing one additional post lantern to match here. We're not changing the amount. There's a light on this that's staying exactly the same. There was a light here, and instead of having it here, we're proposing having it hang it inside of the existing, or the proposed portico structure. So it won't have any upward layer whatsoever. There was a light, because the configuration of the sliding doors is changing here. There was, it was set up before where one light here and one light here was appropriate. But now there's three panels of glass. We want to have two lights per, so there's an increase. Two lights back here. This, there's a back door here stays exactly the same. There's a door here, the light stays exactly the same. And then we're proposing a series of landscape lights, which are these, they're dark sky compliant punta copper fixtures. They're hooded tubs and they shine down. They sit about 24 inches tall. Proposing a, I think they're about five or six of those in the landscape area in the back. Essentially where the grade change is, we're getting steps of those, so you can move around at night. You can say one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Planting.
Before you actually need lights, what are the total room units?
Total is twenty, I believe it's, hold on. Sorry, I'm in a parking. Twenty-one, seven oh five.
What's the existing?
I think it's around sixteen, let's see. The path lights are a total of six thirty new units. The post lamp, the additional post lamp is a total of fifteen hundred lumens. And then the two new wall mounts are eighteen hundred and eighteen hundred.
Twenty-six and twenty-one.
So it was about sixteen, I think, something like that. Was sixteen and now it's twenty-one, somewhere in that vicinity.
So you're increasing the light level by twenty-five to thirty percent?
Right. Sixteen, yes, we're adding four thousand, five thousand, yeah, about four thousand lumens to sixteen-ish.
Do you have a kind of a post lamp?
What kind?
Yeah.
It's, it's one of the Royal Barry Wills models that have it here.
All lights are dark sky compliant?
Well, that one isn't.
There it is.
Right. Where's the, where's the fixture in that closure?
It's a one one hundred watt bulb, and it sits in the, it sits in the bottom of the fixture.
See it?
It looks like there's a, there's a lantern cover over it, but, yes.
What do the wall mounted fixtures look like?
They are, they match existing. This is what they look like there. It's a ship lantern. And actually, they don't have an open top. They have a completely closed top. It's copper top here, it has glass on three sides.
Where's the fixture in those?
Where they, it's, there are two candles, and each one is six rated sixty watts.
It's a hundred and twenty watt fixture?
I think so.
Adding like two hundred and forty watts?
Yes, the two sixty watt lights, hundred watt. They're still rated sixteen, that made it right.
Do you think it'd be possible to, for that post lamp, at least the dark sky fixture? I mean, that would meet with your needs as well.
It would have to, that would probably mean, unless, you know, they were, it would mean replacing both of them rather than just one of them. The idea was to match the existing lantern. I mean, of course it's possible.
Yeah, that would be probably better.
We were. I wonder, is it possible to modify the fixture itself and to do something to replace the glass panels on top so that they're not?
Do it sometimes. It just depends. Some companies do, some companies don't.
I don't really think there's an advantage to having them eliminate upwards.
No, it's partly that. It's also partly seeing the actual burn is distracting and, you know, we try to avoid that. So if you have the fixture hidden in there, the light goes down on the burning.
I understand. It was really a practical design. I mean, you can see with this, this whole lighting plan we're doing is really not highly event to wheel here. Aside from the lights that are part of the new landscape development, it's just keeping what's there, there. And with the addition of, and they were approved once before, and, you know, they were selected very carefully by Barry Wills. They go with the house.
Well, also, there was a whole process. There's a reason why there's not a pole light lamp at the end of the driveway. I mean, that was a big point of discussion in the original site manager view. You know, we wanted not to have lamps on right on the street.
Yep.
People seem to like them even if they don't have any practical function.
Yep.
Which in this case it wouldn't, because it's so far from the house that it's just, it's like a white house. So my, my feeling is, my personal feeling is, everything is corrupted except the pole lamp in the front. And the only other question I'm going to ask is the fix, the wall mounted fixtures in the back, can you get those with one bulb apiece as opposed to two?
Have you looked?
It's a huge.
I did.
I mean, usually, if you could get a two fit bulb light fixture, you can get the one bulb version. And then you'd save, there are four of these, right?
Yes.
So you'd save two hundred and forty watts. They're going to be brighter than you imagine.
I agree.
First sunglasses.
I agree. And in order, you know, I mean, you all know, and I know for sure, that in order to appreciate any landscape lighting, the ambient light level needs to be fairly low. Otherwise, your eyes are constantly shot.
And these are just going to blast you right out of your seat. I don't think they have to be that bright. So those are, but everything else to me is, is fine.
Do you have another question?
Sure.
Did I hear correctly that on the approved plan, it was approved for a circular driveway?
It was.
But what's built there now is not that.
Yes.
And so in your plan, is that basically, how close is that to what was the approved plan?
It's slightly more generous because our island is bigger, of which is more of a larger nursery of tree. But it's, but conceptually, it's very much the same. I don't have a record. I don't have a copy. But it's on file with the town.
We don't, we don't have a planner, so we can't fucking.
Well, I'm happy, I could send it to a couple of sites, to a few places.
Yeah, maybe you could email it to me.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, I mean, as long as Dave Conway, actually, is, we have that analysis from Dave. We should be okay on that. You know, that would worry me about the impervious surface. But if he says it's okay, it's good for me.
Do you have any drives with the new portico? I don't. Adolpho Kress presented it to you, I guess, a month and a half ago, and I think it was a quick approval.
This is like a caved house. It looks like a caved apartment, you know, it's three, no, no.
So the idea, I mean, I can describe it. It's fairly contemporary push-on, you know, the addition those to the house, the granite posts. And the idea, I think we're thinking of this granite, I guess, and this stone work back here. So it'll be a sneak peek if much to come once you get behind. But it's, you know, it has sort of tips attached that are Barry Wills', but also has contemporary people's.
We're good. We set off.
On the line.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
What's, what is, do you know the average width of the driveway?
Twelve.
Twelve?
And, you know, we're, we're happy to, I mean, I think potentially go down to eleven.
I'm happy to have it to go down to eleven too.
Yeah.
But that's, that's for another discussion. I mean, if you, are you replacing the whole driveway?
It's in pretty bad shape. We would rather not. You know, I think light bulbs, we'd rather not replace it, but it's, it's buckling and it's coming apart in some places.
If they're replacing the driveway, should we talk about making it narrower, at least conditionally? Or maybe, if you decide you have to replace it, come back?
So is eleven preferred width?
It is for me, usually.
Kerry said something we could agree to. I mean, I think it's.
My only concern, I mean, now we have a circle, I often have to back out of it now because there are trucks in there now, and it's not, it feels quite narrow as it is backing out because it's sort of curved.
Oh, you have to back down the whole driveway?
Well, I do now, but once there's a circle, I suppose I'll be going forward. So I don't know if the foot would make, I mean, it doesn't feel wide to me right now when I'm driving on it.
No, it's, I think it's twelve now. We just kept it the way it is. We're really not proposing to change the driveway, other than out here, which is a geometric change. But I personally don't think it's a problem to make it eleven. I think that, I think it will function just as well. With twelve, you can kind of squeak by another car if you ever have to. But chances are your tire's going to go off the driveway anyway, and eleven is going to make it indifferent. So I don't see any advantage to having an extra foot if it makes you feel happier.
As I say, maybe the thing we do, you don't know if you have to replace it or not. If this, this term that you do, then maybe come back and we can.
I have a feeling what we'll try, what we'll probably do is put, is grind it down where it meets the house and some of the critical areas, rebuild it in certain weak areas, and then recoat it with a top coat. But in the process of doing that, we'll be fine. We could skip, you know, we are reconfiguring it. You know, a slight different alignment here, so we have to add a few feet here and cut a few feet here. We could also just cut six inches along on each side or a foot on either side.
Okay. Kim, what's your response?
I mean, I obviously respect the understory and the natives and all of that. We did work a little bit about just buttoning up some of the holes where the trail would go in. But it's, you're not going to see it, and it's a much better plan than what's there now. It's also, and I don't know if you've been in there, but it's definitely, you don't even notice this house from the street. That driveway is in, it's tucked in. There's a lot of, you know, off left streets. So you, you're not going to see it. You don't see it now, but it's going to be even less visible afterwards.
Those pines will be.
You guys, you okay? What do you think about the light fixtures? Are you with me on the light fixtures?
Yeah.
I mean, the landscape lights look fine. It's more of a, definitely.
Well, lumens created about, it's fifteen hundred, and the house lights were eighteen hundred, something like that. Yeah. Yeah, I, I looked very quickly, you know, at the wall mounted sponsors to see if they had one candle, and it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't right there. So I can look again, or I can ask if they can customize something.
They usually can. It's usually not a, it's usually not a big deal.
And how do you feel if the, you know, I, I'm not certain how wet Kerry is to that post lamp at the entrance, or offsetting the entrance. I think it's back about thirty feet or so. But if that were dark sky compliant, would that be better, or is it?
Be better.
In fact, I should say not better, acceptable. And if, if not, then?
It just feels, because of the curve in the driveway, it feels quite dark.
Here.
Going in when you pull in. You don't see the other lantern.
The thing is, we just, the guys that are building next door, we just told them they'll post light. What about a low light? What about, what about something, what about something up here?
Yeah, I'm thinking like what, if there's.
What about one of those garden lights or something like that? If it's, if the driveway is dark, and that's what you're worried about, you're not worried about the light up here. But it's to delineate, not, is that the idea?
Yeah, sort of the entrance, so that when you start pulling in, you know where you're driving.
You could put, we could put a, you know, some sort of fixture, a post here, a baller, that had a fixture on it that was dark sky compliant, that would throw light onto the positive twelve feet or eleven pavement.
Right. That would be, that would do the job, and it wouldn't be in everybody's face.
That actually might be quite nice too. Especially if we can work in a piece of granite. That would be another piece of the puzzle from the back.
That could work very good.
But, you know, introducing you to the granite.
And then you're the master.
Right.
The other one.
Right, it's part of the contemporary. Kerry, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think that's, I think we could look at.
So why don't we select? So why don't we select something and then send it over with the, along with the engineering study?
Just a picture. We don't need the piece of granite.
Yeah. Sure. Have you requested the engineering study? Was there something else?
Oh, the lights in the back, whether they can be seen over.
Right.
And the former turnaround.
That's right. Yeah, we should be taking another request.
I know. How do you feel about the press?
Well, we're, Kerry's taking minutes, so. We have a, we have a memory.
Can I answer any more questions for the group?
Nope, I think we're all set. So with those, provided that what Wes said's a process acceptable, I'll bring it in next meeting. But conditional on that, everybody okay with the changes that we saw?
Looks like a very beautiful one.
Thank you.
So somebody want to move to accept the changes with the conditions?
So who?
Second.
On favor?
I.
Okay. You're good to go.
So I just want to review the conditions if that's okay. So we're, provided that I said turnaround plan, fixture modification for the sconce, the wall mount, right? Post, post light alternative. And in the drainage study.
Drainage study.
We discussed driveway becoming 11.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, that's it?
That's it?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, it was like 10 meetings ago. Actually, it was back, Joe was, it was in February sometime.
It was a really busy meeting, probably like 100 people.
It was the last, one of the last things up. It was like, here it is.
Yeah. It was a long one.
Yeah.
Do you need to drink?
No, thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Sorry about the trees, sidewalk that I didn't.
Just sprout in the body.